We'll call this Tuesday, May 19th, 2020. Sierra County Commission Meeting to Order. Due to the national, state, and county COVID-19 declared emergency and public health order dated March 23rd, 2020, as well as subsequent executive orders limiting public gatherings in the state, this meeting will not be physically open to the public. All members of the public will be able to attend and listen to the meeting via Facebook Live at the following links. Facebook@SierraCountySentinel.KCHS Radio, YouTube.com/KCHS Radio, Twitter@KCHS Radio, Dish Network Channel 371, YouTube, Local Radio, KCHS 1019. I want to thank GBK Media for extending the courtesy to broadcast this meeting and thank our Sierra County Emergency Officer Paul Tully for getting us set up. Ms. Secretary, uh, Secretary, Ms. Clerk, would you do a roll call?
District one?
Yes.
District two?
Here.
District three, here.
Sheriff Hamilton, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
By order, Mr. Chairman, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the State of New Mexico, the seed symbol of perfect friendships among the United Nations.
Thank you. Since it's a closed meeting, we don't have any, any guests. We do have Chuck Winworth here representing the media. We are observing social distancing here and we, uh, we will continue to do so. Very hard to hear with a face mask on, so I'm choosing not to wear a face mask. My fellow commissioners can do as they wish and will respect that. I need a motion to approve the agenda.
Commissioner Day moves to approve the agenda as presented.
Commissioner Luna seconds.
Roll call vote, please.
District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
District three, yes.
Motion passes. Approval of minutes of the last meeting.
Commissioner, Commissioner Day moves to approve the minutes from the April 21st meeting.
Commissioner Luna seconds.
Roll call vote, please.
District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
Is there a motion for the consent agenda?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Luna makes the motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Commissioner Day seconds.
Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Paxton?
Yes.
Commissioner Day?
Yes.
Commissioner Luna?
Yes.
Presentations of reports, Manager Swingle.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. I had staff submit written reports that we can review with the Commissioners to keep them from attending the meeting due to the state of emergency that we're in. Under the admin, right now, the administration, admin staff and the Treasurers Office are currently working with our auditors for the 2019-20 audit. They're in preparations of getting all the numbers and pulling all the documents that the auditors will need for the process. Finance is currently working on the FY 2021 budget and getting that ready. We will be voting on a preliminary budget today. However, in approximately 30 days, we'll be reviewing the final budget, formal budget, that we'll be submitting to Santa Fe as well. Last week, we had an opportunity. The Road Director, Billy Neely, and myself, we met with Department of Transportation and the Spaceport to discuss transferring the Uppam Road to the State of New Mexico. And with that, we would accept some similar mileage and structure, physical structures on those roads, something comparable to what we would be giving them. The state, of course, wants the road because of the Spaceport and that is kind of a flagship facility for the state of New Mexico. And they would like to have the role and responsibility for the Uppam Road. The Commission has historically supported that endeavor and wanted to give them the road. However, we're working on the details of what roads we'll accept at this point. And it's very possible that we'll have the roads, the miles, and everything that they would like to transfer to us available for the next meeting. The county broadband study, the county-wide broadband study is now complete. We've reviewed the draft of the document. It's a very good document. We did some editing. Paul Tully did significant editing of the document and we sent that back to them. We have to have the report to the USDA who is funding this grant opportunity by next month. So we're ahead of schedule and I think you're going to be quite pleased with, with the report. In contrast to the report that we saw from DUET a few years ago, which suggested that Sierra County did not have any broadband needs that weren't being met today, we realized that was an error and it was probably more of a, a model that tracked what the provider said they were providing versus the reality of what we actually have in Sierra County.
I think they call that barroom survey.
That's right. One thing that's quite notable in the broadband study is we asked the community to fill out the study, go online and complete the, the study for their particular area where they reside, whether it be in one of the communities and towns or out in rural Sierra County. And we had a very good response rate from individuals and they got great data, as well as speed tests were also taken and gave them the data they needed to complete the report. So we asked the community to, to assist us and they did in very large numbers. So that was, that was fantastic. We're continuing to work on the 2020 census in the Complete Count Committee. We have a number of entities within the community that are assisting with the Complete Count Committee. And we received a second grant, so now we have two grants each of $14,819.77, a grant total of $29,639.54. Due to the pandemic, we had to change our operation and our, our plan that we had created. We were spending a lot of money on setting up the computer labs. Well, a couple of days before the computer labs were actually scheduled to open up, the pandemic hit and we couldn't have those computer labs out in the community. So we refocused and we're spending the money on marketing and communication via the newspaper and radio, promoting the census and participation in the census. And this will continue through the period of, of the census. The Assessors Office doesn't really have anything to report other than they're very excited about getting out into the field again in the very near future and, you know, continuing their work. We, as a county, have suspended all field work unless it was just absolutely necessary, including going out and doing the processes and assessments in the building.
Just a question, Manager Swingle. Is our, is our census participation increasing? Can we tell? Do we have any, any measure on that?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, that's a really good question. Last time I looked at it, it was about a week ago where I saw the numbers. We're about 25.9% response rate. You think about that, that's fairly low. However, when you realize, and this is the state reporting this in the Census Bureau, reporting this information to us, that's actually very high because we don't have a lot of fixed addresses where people receive the, the card to either apply online or where they receive the census in the mail. They don't send them to post office boxes and we have a high number of those in those, in this community. So they're quite pleased with the response rate that we have at this, at this point. But now we're encouraging folks to go online and complete the census, census, census document online, whether they receive the card or not. And if they have the written, they receive the written document, they can still go online and complete it. So they don't have to wait. From detention, you have a written report placed on your desk, the activities to the month, for the month thus far, thus far. Currently, we have 34 inmates in custody. Thirty of them are in Luna County, two are in Socorro and two are at the Department of Corrections for Behavioral Health Evaluations. The population is 62% male, 38% female. The maximum count we had last month was 43. The minimum count we had last month was 30. Our average population is about 34, which we're seeing on right now. New arrests last month, we had 14 new arrests. And releases, we had 25 releases. Arrests by agency, we have two from the state police, two miscellaneous, whether it be through magistrate or district court reprimanded back or the adult probation, out of state, or people who do self, turn themselves in. The Sheriff's Department had seven arrests. The PD had three, for a total of 14.
That's the lowest we've had on arrests in a long time, yeah?
It is. It is. And I think that's a, it's indicative of everybody staying at home to the extent possible. Current invoices in the budget. Luna County, we have a bill for $55,380, which that's pretty low compared to a typical month. Socorro, it's $5,300. COVID-19, we instituted, Virginia's implemented a number of policies and procedures and on housekeeping, on inmates and separation of inmates, decontamination of facilities, personal protective equipment is being worn as well as for the physical plant and for the vehicles. So we haven't had any cases, knock on wood, in detention and hopefully we won't. We did have our first case in Luna County where we had, where we housed inmates overnight and they addressed it quite rapidly. We have the IDP and the RISE grants and there's a new grant that we just received information on late last week. The State Department of Health has extended a, a new grant and it's really an opportunity zone based on, on the community and the anticipated or projected number of people suffering from behavioral health issues or substance abuse. So we're looking at that grant. You're going to see some literature and I also have a letter of support for the county to sign in support of that grant. This preliminary at this point, it's just having the letters of support with the application if we do submit it. And I'll talk a little about that in a few minutes. Emergency management, the staff has participated in numerous conference calls and Zoom meetings with the White House, with the CDC, National Association of Counties, the Department of Health, DFA, Tax and Rev, State Economic Development, New Mexico Counties, the Managers Affiliate, all concerning COVID-19. Through social media and KCHS, Emergency Management has communicated and ongoing in communicating with the public, keeping them informed as to what the rules are as they're changing quite frequently now, just keeping everyone up to date, keeping them posted, providing a lot of information for the business community on many of the stimulus packages because there are a lot of information that's flowing on a regular basis and Paul's getting that posted for the community. Thus far, emergency, emergency management, facility management have provided 700 or 7,371 meals to area residents. That's as of last night, 5:00. That's a tremendous number of meals that the county's provided to residents that are experiencing food insecurity at this point. You know, we don't know how long this is going to continue, but we've had a number of individuals contact us wanting to donate. We don't feel that we're probably going to be purchasing any additional food in the future. We've got a pretty good supply at this point to address the foreseeable future. So we've encouraged them to contact Matthew 25, which is the community's food bank. It has been the community's food bank. The county got involved in this endeavor because of the urgency of, of the pandemic. And I think we've fulfilled our role, but things are going to get back to normal in the near future. And Matthew 25 is always looking for donations, whether it be food or, or financial donations.
That's good.
Emergency Management has provided PPE to the area healthcare professionals and the entities to emergency responders. In fact, tomorrow, we're going to go pick up some little over a pallet of personal protective equipment in Demme. They're starting the spoken hub process for PPE now. So they're going to drive right to Sierra County, take it to Demme, and then we'll go to Demme and pick it up. Hopefully it will fit in one large truck and, and bring it back to the community, to the entities that have ordered it. Thus far, Emergency Management has provided for the Veterans Home, 4,235 N95 masks, 2,460 gowns, 1,100 procedure masks, 4,400 gloves and over 1,200 pairs of face shields. For Sierra Vista Hospital, it's a little over 1,500 procedure masks, over 1,800 N95 masks, 345 gowns and 50 pairs of gloves. Sierra Healthcare provided 401 K-N95 masks, 140 N95 masks, 250 procedure masks, 100 sets of gloves and 25 face shields. Ben Archer, we have provided 300 procedure masks, 100 face shields and 300 gowns. It's a tremendous amount of personal protective equipment. I keep hearing the stories that there's not enough personal protective equipment out there for the hospitals, emergency responders. New Mexico is not experiencing that. I don't know about the rest of the country, but Emergency Management is working, working well from the state level all the way to the communities throughout the state of New Mexico. We have a good supply. The orders come in regularly. We never get everything we ask for, but we get plenty. And our hospitals and, and care facilities are, are doing quite well. Other duties that Emergency Management has been involved in is reviewing and sent breast prep specs for a breast prep for Hillsborough. That's going on. It's going reviewing and being forwarded to the State Bar and Marshal's Office for approval. And I'd like to say that I'm quite delighted that all of the fire department applications for fire funds are in and then submitted to the state. So that's fantastic news. From facility management perspective, facility management, if you've been in any of the county buildings recently, has installed a plexiglass type sub material separating the public and the employees at the counters, very much what you see in some of the, the convenience stores now. Did it very inexpensively and I have some pictures that I'd just like to hand out to the Commissioners. They're in black and white, so it looks like more of a mudshot type picture, but it gives you the idea of what facility management has done to protect the employees. They've installed the glass in the Assessors Office, the Treasurers Office and at the compliance, misdemeanor compliance program. Facility management is ongoing efforts have been cleaning and decontaminating the county buildings for the public as well as the staff. They've transitioned the HVAC system, converting from winter to summer now, so the air conditioners are all functional in all of the buildings. And of course, they are taking the lead on packaging and processing food and delivering it to our residents as part of our food bank program. And when they have start time, they're out doing weed control, which is never ending now in the Sierra County. The Flood Director continued to support the Emergency Operations Center for Sierra County. We brought him in very early pandemic because, A, we needed another body and he has tremendous knowledge and skills in emergency management. So he's continuing to work with us and he's tracking PPE of all of our facilities and looking at burn rates to make sure that we're staying ahead of the game and nobody is left without personal protective equipment that needs it. He conducted four building permits for floodplain compliance, one in Tier C and three in the county. Conducted six floodplain determinations for residents and two for realtors in the community. Started the levee repairs in Endless Creek at Clayville, Clayville Road. And they're going to work east toward the interstate in that project. He's attended two floodplain webinars, maintained his CEUs for his certification. And he has met with a number of county residents that are having floodplain complications and he's helping them work through whatever their, their issues are. And that's one in Kingston and one in Endless Creek. He also met with the DOT Bridge Engineer at the Cattio Project and showed them the completed project, get the closeout from there in. And also wanted to talk about some of the other issues that need to be addressed in that area while they were there. The misdemeanor compliance program, they have 64 clients in the DWI compliance program and they have 58 in the misdemeanor compliance program. Pre-prob compliance is 115 members involved in that program. Electronic monitoring, we have 14 in ankle monitor and 15 in silverback for a total of 29 in electronic monitoring. The Road Department, they're preparing the north side of Los Colombo's Creek Road for chip sealing. They want to start that on the 26th of this month, 26th and 27th. This includes material cleanup and pavement itself, hot mix and some shoulder and pothole work that they'll be doing, getting it in condition for the chip sealing. They poured also on that area, they poured a 120-foot concrete water crossing in a high risk, in a high-risk area. They saw the cattle guard on AO 05 or Turtleback Avenue, which is a road behind, it's the road behind the river, on the other side of the river. The existing cattle guard was in pretty bad shape and it needed to be replaced, so they took care of that. The Road Crew has been patching roads all over the county and special emphasis in Winston and the Dura Ray area. Blade operators have been sticking to their schedules. However, they've been pulled from their routine maintenance and working on pothole patrol and repairs, particularly on AO 13 in assisting department. Kind of an all-hands project, particularly on that road, which is so high-profile. Couple other things from, you know, the, the County Managers Office. Commissioner, I think you saw the statistics last night in the update where we stand in New Mexico COVID. We have 6,096 cases. While the state's performed 137,620 COVID tests today, they're in that neighborhood of 3,000 to 4,000 tests a day that they're doing statewide. It's a remarkable number. Yesterday, we had 165 new cases and unfortunately, the dog will have their first case. Although this is the second time they've had their first case. The last one was removed as an out-of-state individual. The cases are in the northwest part of the state, including the deaths. The deaths right now, there's 87 deaths COVID-related in San Juan County, which equates to 32% of the deaths total all over New Mexico. McKenna County has 78, which is 28.9%. Burn Leo had 59, or 21, 28%. San Al has 24, or 8.9%. And the rest of the state has 22 deaths, fatalities from COVID, which is 8.2% of the, the deaths in New Mexico.
A question, Manager Swingle.
Yes, sir.
I, I see, looking at that update, that 1,796 people have recovered from the COVID-19 and that currently 213 are hospitalized. Can you speak to the situation statewide and more particularly Sierra Vista Hospital on readiness to respond to any COVID cases?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. I can, I'm in daily contact with the CEO of the hospital and we haven't had any cases in the hospital where there's a hospitalization that's occurred. The hospital is ready. They've taken tremendous procedures and, and taken measures to ensure that the staff are protected from the, the public or anyone that comes into the hospital and vice versa. The public is protected from the hospital. Nobody gets in the hospital without a, without a mask. There's also a series of questions they ask them about travel as well as temperature, whether they've been sick lately, whether they have a fever. They take their temperature as well to get in the door, into the hospital. They set up a, a portable building outside of the emergency room that everybody that comes in the hospital goes through that screening there before they're allowed entrance into the hospital. So they're ready. They're, they're ready. Hopefully, they're ready and nothing happens, but they are ready. They have plenty of personal protective equipment. They're drilling, they're training on it every day at the hospital in preparation of these cases coming into the hospital. We have six or eight ventilators in our hospital. Not one of them has been used, COVID-related. Talk about 213 people have been hospitalized or are hospitalized as of yesterday at 5:00. The whole premise of the measures that the governor and the state have taken were to avoid overwhelming the, the mental, the behavior, the healthcare facilities and hospitals and all the emergency services. We've done that. We've absolutely done that. There's 213, I, I don't recall the number of beds we have in New Mexico, but it's a tremendous number. I think we're using 50... How many ventilators are in use? 54 ventilators are in use?
Statewide.
Statewide? At statewide, we have the capacity of what, in the neighborhood of 470. At statewide, we have the capacity of, in the neighborhood, 470 ventilators in New Mexico to be used. So we've clearly addressed that overwhelmingness system. And now it's just a matter of addressing those individuals that are test positive. The vast majority of them go home, they self-quarantine at home, they recover at home. I think probably it's misleading to say that we've had 1,700 people recover, it's probably much greater than that, but when you look at it, that's probably the least thing that's tracked. They're tracking everybody that's in the hospital, that's people that actually test positive for COVID, the use of ventilators, those are the things that are being tracked. I think the secondary issue you look at is how many people have recovered. So that's probably a very low number.
Well, our condolences to all 270 families of those that have died, but I think it's important that we track recovery, and I wish there was a way that we could track those who test positive and self-quarantine and had no ill effects from the visit from the invisible virus. One other question. Manager Swingle, have we had to lay any staff off, furlough staff at Sierra Vista?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, they have, they have had to furlough a number of employees. They've done voluntary furloughs, and I don't believe that's changed since my last communication with the CEO. They've done voluntary furloughs, the hospital has very few patients, they have very few, they're providing very few services, and the hospital still has to be able to meet a budget and function within the revenue that they have. So they have done some furloughs with as many hospitals and healthcare facilities have around the country.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I sent out an email yesterday informing you that the New Mexico counties is no longer going to provide the annual subscription to the New Mexico Legislative Report that we rely on during the legislative session. And everybody's feeling the crunch on revenue, and they're all trying to cut costs to the extent that they can. This is one that NMC determined was necessary. If we want to procure this on our own, we're looking at about $3,500, $3,700 for us to procure that for Sierra County. So I need to know whether you want us to include that in the budget for next year, one, but we also need to, if we're going to do it, we need to let them know right away, because we are looking at a special session, special session is imminent, and we will not have any, we will not have access to the legislative report. So kind of wait and see what the wishes are of the commission. I have heard from Commissioner Day, he feels that it's not necessary. We have, under the arrangement with the Association of Counties, we have five licenses to operate and get into the database and look where, how the litigation or the legislation was moving, and allow us to track it. If we were to move forward, I think we would probably want to do the same thing. The five licenses seem to be just fine for Sierra County. However, is that something you want to spend $3,700 for a year?
Mr. Chairman, my question was, if we don't do that, how much more work is it to track those? Is it, and in my opinion, it was nice to get the emails and the information. Is it going to be more work if you have to, if we have to each go and search that versus getting the information sent directly? And my second question was, that is $3,700 per subscription, or the $3,750 covers all five?
That would be the five licenses. Mr. Chairman, Commissioner.
Attorney Pato, do you have an opinion?
Mr. Chairman, I might just guess, you know, I would suspect that there's savings to be had if the counties were to come together and purchase a subscription amongst themselves. And so, and I'm guessing that the association wasn't paying 3,700 times 33, is my guess, you know, so it might be worthwhile to have the manager reach out to the other counties and to the other county managers, see if, whether there's interest in those counties, and see if we might be able to go in together and share a package.
Mr. Chairman, there is an adjustment, as I'm used to tracking legislation in other ways, and so for me, I didn't see the need for it, but, you know, $3,750 bucks, or $3,750, and I didn't see the need for it, but again, if there's other ways to save money where it's not costing as much, I think I'd be okay with it. For me personally, I didn't see the need for it.
Understand. Manager Swingle, as far as I'm concerned, if we can, we're going to have to have a pretty sharp pencil in this budget cycle. I do look at those legislative reports when we're in session and when special things come up, but $3,750 seems to be extreme when we use it really during the session, mostly and shortly thereafter. But if we could, following Attorney Pato's suggestion, see if there's some other counties that would chip in with us and go and still have five licenses, we can economize and even be down to one license and share that by email when we get things going. So does that answer your question?
It does.
Do you need a vote on that?
No, sir, Mr. Chairman. What I'll do is, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, what I'll do is contact some counties and see if they would like to pull together our resources, and then approach New Mexico Legislative Report on some type of bulk discount.
Very well.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I gave you a couple of handouts that I thought were really germane. The first one is, it's one with the pie chart, that's from State Economic Development, and the first three pages are on, over released as of February 2020, and then the pages behind that are what was released in November of 2019, give you an idea of some of the impact of early stages of the COVID-19 pandemic and the impact it had on New Mexico revenue. The second one is a memorandum that was created by staff economists at LFC, Tax and Rev, DFA, Department of Transportation. They worked with UNM and the Bureau of Business and Economic Research Bureau, as well as New Mexico Tech and NMSU, and it gives you kind of a forecast of the economic recovery of New Mexico. It seems to be consistent with everything I've seen thus far. There's two, there's two concepts there, one is a U-shaped type recovery, and the other is more elongated, it's a L-shaped recovery. Think it'd be an interesting read for the Commissioners to have.
Thank you.
And lastly, if you recall, earlier this year in January, we received an award for reducing our workers' comp claims to a great extent. In fact, we received a state award for our loss ratios. With that in mind, and because the New Mexico counties is really understanding of our economic crisis that we're in, and the lack of revenue that we're experiencing as an entity, they've reduced our workers' comp premiums for this next year over 50%. Our premium was $67,000 and some change, the new premium is going to be $30,490. So our workers' comp efforts, our safety program, really paid off, and it couldn't have come at a better time for Sierra County.
Well, congratulations on that.
Yes, thank you.
Any other counties doing as well as that?
I think, they look for ways to reduce their contributions, their premiums to counties, with the understanding that everyone's going to be strapped for revenue over the next couple of years. So kudos to them for doing everything they can to assist us.
That's some good news today, thank you.
Mr. Chair, I also have two letters of support that I'd like to get your signature on. Typically, the county manager signs most letters of support, but these are of a nature for the grants that I think that the chairman and the commission should sign. And one is the RISE program, which they changed the name from the IDP program to RISE, and the other one is the Perspective Grant of the Investment Opportunities.
I'm glad to.
I'll stand for any questions that the commission may have.
Questions? Sheriff Luna, would you like to give a report? Sheriff Hamilton, excuse me, you can use that microphone, and we'll put the camera on you right there, I think you'll catch a cover of, well, what a.
That's okay, you got to hear some of the stuff I've been told here later.
I don't know whether to be offended by that or not.
I'll be brief, I'm kind of like the assessor's office, I don't have a whole lot. We had the opportunity this last week to be involved in the graduation drive-by ceremony. Deputy Dale Harrison, our school resource officer, was contacted by the school superintendent and asked if we could reach out to area law enforcement and help put that together. They actually started showing up in my office that afternoon, I thought we were doing another warrant roundup or something to pick up some of those arrest numbers that have gone down. As it turned out, it was, again, it was a great opportunity for area law enforcement to all come together and celebrate our Hot Springs High School graduates and give them somewhat of a send-off there and a congratulatory parade. So that went off well, and again, I appreciate everything that Hot Springs High School staff and school superintendent did to get that accomplished.
It should be a graduation they remember.
I'm sure that they would have to, I mean, I think with COVID and everything else, I'd actually got a call a couple of days prior to that from the superintendent that he was actually getting some reports that they may not be able to do it, that they had shut a similar one down in Grant County. So we definitely didn't want to hit the news that way, but we were able to, again, practice all the guidelines and implement all the guidelines that were necessary that the Secretary of Health has put out there. As for the operations, we're still operating in Phase Two at the sheriff's office. It's actually the phase that's similar into the current PHO that's out through the cabinet secretary. So we're going to remain in there. I know, I guess one of the things guys are having to get used to is putting those masks on. Before, it was a requirement that anytime we had contact with the public traffic stop or something like that, then the guys would have to put the masks on. So right now, we have the N95s, there were some donations of some of the homemade masks that are a little easier. Unfortunately, there's only one mask out there that's tactically correct for law enforcement, and that's normally issued to my IRT team, but I don't want my guys having to run around in balaclavas. So, you know, some of my guys wear radio earpieces, and sometimes these masks that fit on the ears can interfere with that. So again, it's something that we're all kind of transitioning to and trying to get used to and finding what works for us and what doesn't. So if you see any of my guys out in the public not wearing their mask, please let me know, we'll make sure that, we want to try to set the example for the folks out there. We did take possession of a couple of new units a few weeks ago and have got those up and running. One of them was actually the Stone Garden vehicle, it's going to save wear and tear on our regular patrol vehicles, so we need the deputies that are participating in those Stone Garden grant programs out there are actually going to be using the Stone Garden vehicle, put the mileage jump on that vehicle as opposed to our standard patrol vehicles. But outside of that, again, we're continuing to implement those precautions necessary to keep Sierra County COVID-free. I'll stand for any questions. Questions?
Mr. Chairman, I do have a couple of questions. I want to thank you for your, since this began, I've called you a couple of times when there's been some concerns about the numbers and confusion about the health order, and you've been right there, and I appreciate that. Your work for the entire department as well as all the law enforcement for the graduation was fantastic, was phenomenal. I have gotten more calls than I have ever cared to have regarding the special deputizing. Do we have a number, a hard and fast number, on how many people you have special deputized?
I have no hard number, mainly because there's no reporting requirement on it, and these are issued in a, so we're in, basically, we're in the recruiting stage. Anybody that's wanting to come in and act as a volunteer, I'm basically saying, okay, I can use you as a special deputy. If I issue one of these, it's issued in an inactive stage at this point, there's, they have no powers, no authorities whatsoever until such time as I call those individuals up. Current policy would require, if I did send a message out there, that all the people who are willing to volunteer and help the sheriff's office, they need you to come to the office, that's when we would actually start the documenting of those individuals, because then I would have them actually in service or have them assigned to a specific task. That's also whenever vetting, the vetting process would kick in. I mean, so if I hire even a regular deputy, today put out an application for a regular deputy, I can't even ask that individual certain questions pertaining to his history until such time as I've actually given them a conditional offer of employment. So my policy on the special deputies is pretty much the same way. If you're interested in volunteering, then you let me know that, and if I need those volunteers, then I'll put a mask call out for you at this point.
So I guess, thank you for your explanation and comments. I guess that goes even further to the calls and concerns I've got. If you're not keeping a list, how do you contact those people if you need them? How do we, why issue them a piece of paper? What does that piece of, basically, from what you've just described, that piece of paper means nothing.
That's for sure, that's absolutely right.
It's as good as this paper right here, or the toilet paper in the bathroom is pretty precious. It's really an invalid document, so it's just a participatian trophy, if you will, because we don't have a list, we don't know, we're not in the need process at this time. Am I correct in all of those comments?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, you're absolutely right.
Okay.
These are posthumously issued, these are, this is symbolic in its nature, that's all it is.
Okay. That's what I was, thank you.
Anything else?
Nothing else.
I have a couple of questions. First, I'm sure you act your 100% legal statute authority correctly, can you state the statute?
The statute is 441-10?
And the reason I ask is just, there's a lot of things that have been going around, of course, social media got a hold of this, and we've seen what it has done, and so I just, more than anything, for clarification for the community, you know, there's a lot of things going around, and so I just want to be clear that to the community, you did act in your legal authority to do that, to have deputies people, there's no question about that. There's been some questions in different stories I've heard around the community, and I just want to hear it directly from you as to why you did it. You know, KQ sort of had one thing, the KOB sort of had another, and we all know that media's media, but just to get it from you, for the community, to know kind of the reasoning behind deputizing these individuals, and the second question to follow up is what it actually means. You know, moving forward, say, you do have to call on, call on, and what duties would they have?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Day, so the purpose behind it was that this is in lockstep with my emergency operations plan, my emergency response plan that was initially put in at the beginning of March, shortly after the governor actually had issued her emergency declaration. So in Phase Three, in the event that I would get an infection or somebody tests a presumptive positive within my department, and my department would have to then be quarantined, the provisions of 441-10 says that anytime a sheriff feels necessary or believes it's necessary in order to maintain the public peace, that he has the authority in which to issue special deputy commissions to these citizen volunteers. The purpose of this was to get out in front of it, and first and foremost, to recruit citizen volunteers who would be willing to help me out in that particular capacity, should the need arise. It was also the reason, and again, symbolically, the paper that is issued to them that indicates that, you know, the individual whose signature appears on here has been appointed a special deputy, but it specifically has language on there, and I think that's where, I think our social media has been disingenuous, in that they're not putting the information out there that indicates that the individual that has this form or this piece of paper has absolutely no authority whatsoever until the sheriff actually calls that individual into service. And there's many ways that we've addressed or looked. And there's many ways that we've addressed or looked at doing this, because the statute provides that there's no reporting requirement, such as I would have for a regular deputy sheriff, where that appointment would have to be put on file with the clerk's office, that the oath of office would have to be put on file with the clerk's office. I don't have that requirement under these. These are the emergency, when you have an emergency declaration, there's an emergency situation where you have to pull members of the public in and say, do me a favor, I need you to watch this guy right here and hold him until such time as I get back. And that's the purpose of this. And it's why they're issued in the inactive stage. Anybody that has stepped up and said, hey, I'm willing to help you out, sheriff. Again, this is a symbolic gesture on my behalf to say, you know, keep this with you because, and watch our county email address or email the sheriff's office, look for updates on our webpages, or even the use of the emergency broadcast system if necessary. I mean, again, I have no, I'm sure that I can stick my head out the office if I had to on the PA speaker and say, hey, I'm looking for volunteers here, and I would have just as many to step up. So again, my purpose for this is to get out in front of it and ensure that I have that provided for as is listed in my emergency operations plan. But again, most of the information on Facebook is, again, it's disingenuous and it's misinformation that individuals have decided to put out on the ground that I'm somehow attempting to give folks a mechanism to usurp the governor's order. Again, if I did that, I would have activated every single one of them from the get-go. And again, these are in dormant stages, and they're issued dormant, they're issued inactive. And when I need those individuals, it's one mass call-out for individuals to meet at the sheriff's office that are willing to support and willing to help.
So just a follow-up question. Are you having, and the major thing I've heard from the community, and so bear with me on this, are you having trainings currently for these individuals that have become special deputies?
Absolutely, we do.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Thank you. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, I have one more follow-up question.
Go right ahead.
Thank you.
Commissioner Luna.
From what you were talking with Commissioner Day, something just popped into my head. You call these folks in emergency that you have special deputized. I'm afraid that you're, and I think that the general public, from at least the ones I have heard from, are afraid you're not gonna have the time to vet them at that point. And not having a list, not knowing and realizing that that piece of paper holds no true weight or bearing that you've issued those folks, we don't even have a process to begin to start. And you and I both know historically, since you took office, you have not wanted to cross-deputize certified law enforcement officers within this county. And that has been your choice, and I agree with Commissioner Day. You have the statutory right to do whatever you want as far into this regard. But I do worry that in the case of an emergency, if someone was at the rally on Sunday that had COVID-19, you're gonna be in quarantine. How are you gonna do anything to vet those, to certify that those people you have special deputized are going to uphold the law and represent our county and this commission and your office legally? I am scared to death, to be honest with you, of the legal ramifications of some of those people's actions. I have seen their Facebook comments where they are radically as far as can be. And that scares me, that if they don't realize that this piece of paper is just a piece of paper, what they could do to us, representing Sierra County, representing your office. So I guess my concern and the constituents' concerns that I've heard from is that there's not gonna be time to vet those. Why not put out a call to action from the retired state park rangers, the retired border patrol, retired state police, retired city police that are already within the community instead of making the choice to go to the church and doing one congregation and a mass rally congregation? And I guess that's the biggest question I have received. Why not call those who already have the training, who already know the rules, who are familiar with the rules that officers get to play by versus Joe Blow the public?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Luna, I actually have been doing that. The majority of the people that have been walking in off of the street into my office during the week, outside of the rallies, outside of the church congregation. And again, the rally was one thing, but the church congregation were the ones that reached out to me and said, Sheriff, if there's anything that we need to do or anything we can do to help you, we have expertise and skill sets in our congregation and amongst the folks that are present in our church. I've had just the same kind of outpouring from the public coming in off the street and saying, look, I'm former law enforcement, I now live in this community, I'm willing to help you out too. If you, anytime you need me, give me a call. I've got just as many that have walked in off of the street that have not shown up on social media because there's no video supporting it, that have come into my office and offered those same... And many of our retired state parks and retired local law enforcement that have reached out to me and said, look, my services and my expertise and my history are behind you as well. So we can't just go by what we're looking at on social media.
I understand, but Sheriff, you also don't have a list to show anybody who makes any speculation different. And I guess that's the cause and the concern of so many people is there's not a means to start vetting those for you to call, putting out a code red call. You're reaching every felon to every good guy. You're reaching the whole gamut with the code red, and now you're gonna have 4,000 people at your office? How do you sort through those? How do you vet those in the case of an emergency? And heaven forbid, you're the one in quarantine. Those are the concerns I'm hearing, Sheriff.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Luna, that is not the way that this would go down.
I'm afraid not.
This is absolutely not the way that this would go down. If something were to happen where we were unable to provide, I was quarantined, God forbid, my entire department was even temporarily quarantined. We have a testing device at the hospital now that should I have one case in my office, the entire department within a one-hour period, we would know whether they are positive or whether they're negative, which ones could remain on the job, which ones would have to then self-quarantine. If, God forbid, the entire department tested positive, I would immediately be first reaching out to the state police to provide all of the necessary services, the law enforcement services. What I'm looking for in the citizen volunteers and what they have approached me with is clerical duties. Your office is going to have to, your entire office, all of your vehicles are gonna have to be decontaminated. We are here to provide that service to you. This is, when you hear special deputy, it's not that I'm gonna be issuing each one of these individuals guns and flat vests and tell them, here's a badge, go out and start arresting folks. That was never the intent. The intent of this was to get citizen volunteers who were willing to help out in any way and means which they had a skill set to do, whether it be clerical or whether it be just being able to get a bottle of bleach and a rag and wipe down a seat. This is the capacity that these individuals will be used in. Unless they, and that's where the vetting process would come in. While state police is helping us out on the emergency end of it and on the initial requirement to provide for the public safety and continue the operations that we have, we then have the opportunity to say, I only need 10 volunteers. I can vet 10 volunteers very easily within a 30-minute period of time, running those individuals. And that's the only time when I'm gonna be able to run NCICs on them. It's the only time when I'm gonna be able to conduct integrity questionnaires with these individuals and find out what type of background they have. It's the only time that I'm allowed under the law to even ask these questions of those folks is when I bring them in and actually call them to duty.
Mr. Chairman, one question. I think one thing that maybe clears some of this up is, and heaven forbid that we do get to that point, what vetting process would you use for those individuals? What kind of questions? I mean, are we doing background checks, et cetera?
So, Mr. Chairman, again, Commissioner Day. We have the NCIC system, basically triple I, which first of all checks if they've had any felony convictions and any arrests, even on misdemeanor convictions. We have NIMLECs, New Mexico Law Enforcement Terminal System, to let us know what their driving record is here. I have a 120-question, what they call an integrity questionnaire, which asks them about prior drug use, asks them about level of education. Basically, at any point at any time in their life, there's a question pertaining to, you know, whether you're engaged in certain activities. It's the same process that I would run an applicant, a deputy applicant, for a full-time position through. And again, the process takes anywhere from 15 minutes to an hour, depending upon whether they come back immediately with a clearance that they have no criminal history. We would go right into the next phase of the integrity questionnaire, where we're able to do background, actually check the individuals' entire background.
Thank you. I certainly hope it doesn't get to that point. I think that's one thing we're all in agreement on. I have heard the same concerns as Commissioner Luna from constituents. I've got pretty good chewings on the phone over it. And so I just think there's some clarity in questions that needed to be answered. And so for more than anything for you, Sheriff, to kind of clear things up, because again, there's a lot of things floating around, and, you know, certainly the state media's done a very bad job of getting the information out there. I just, I think there's gonna be more questions to be answered moving forward. And so I just, I hope you're ready for that.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I would urge you that if anyone calls you and has any questions, I have a phone at my office as well, and I am more than happy to either answer their questions, try and attempt to put their mind at ease that this is, again, this is not a carte blanche piece of paper that an individual is now given authority to go out there and just start enforcing the law. And again, anyone who's engaged in that, I have explained to each of these individuals there the ramifications that they are facing, two criminal charges if they take it to that level.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm sorry. Sorry.
No, you're under.
There is a very well-shared Facebook post where the preacher of the church that you special deputized says, do you want to see my special deputy papers? I'm a special deputy. So I don't think it's clear that that piece of paper means nothing. To this whole point of this whole conversation, there are people confused about the rights that that piece of paper gives them. So it needs to be cleared up by you.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Luna, I have actually had an opportunity to speak with Mr. Cooper on that and clarify exactly to what extent that that paper gives him any authority.
Okay, thank you. I really am done this time.
Okay, sure. Sheriff, when you deputized the folks at the New Hope Revival Church, was that a religious action? Did you do that so that they could be exempted from the state health order and congregate?
Mr. Chairman, there was discussion about that after I had taken the act. The reason that I did that was, again, those members of that congregation reached out to me. I know, I've known many of those individuals for years. I do not attend that church. Matter of fact, if I was standing in line with the pastor of that church, Mr. Cooper, at the Walmart prior to that incident, I probably wouldn't have been able to even recognize him. Again, it's not a church that I attend. I mean, this is, I think that's the third time I've been at that church since this thing started. I had several members that attend that church regularly that reached out to me and said, Sheriff, we're behind you 100%. If you need anything from us, we are prepared to help you out. This was done, in a sense, to get out in front of, in the event that I needed to start calling citizen volunteers. That was the purpose. It was immediately perceived and the perception, because yes, I did make the comment that, oh, by the way, this would exempt you from the governor's order. But I also followed that up, and it seems to be the one thing that seems to be absent in most of the comments, is that this was not my intent. Again, an individual can perceive whatever they want, they can draw whatever inference they want, but I would prefer that they do that from the facts as opposed to just speculation and conjecture. This was done in an effort to get out in front of, in the event of an incident, in the event that I needed to start calling in citizen volunteers to help me at the office.
As a follow-up to that, can you give us a ratio of those who have come to you outside of that one event, and religious, nonreligious? Can you give a ratio of the folks who have said, I'm also here to support you?
Mr. Chairman, I can tell you right now, including the folks at the rally, who again, were not congregants of that church, were not members of that church, were members of Sierra County, Truth or Consequences, and various areas throughout New Mexico, that far surpassed the number, the 20 or so that were in the congregation. I've had at least another 30, between 30 and 40, that have actually walked into my office. I had one gentleman that refused to say, so help me God, when I administered his oath, because he was an atheist. I mean, again, that is to the extent that I've made it available to the public out there. This has never been and never intended to be solely exclusive to just churches in Sierra County and to those who practice the Christian faith. This has been open to anyone in Sierra County, Truth or Consequences, or even neighboring counties that are willing to come to Sierra County and help me out if necessary.
Okay. Any other questions of the sheriff? Thank you, Sheriff, I appreciate that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Luna, did you want to report anything else while we're on reports?
No, I'm good, thank you.
You're good? Last chair, Day.
No.
I held public comments until this time, and I'm going to read the comments that we've received. So if you've got a timer, Serena?
Yes, sir.
This is from Deb Nicole, or Nicole, I'm sorry. Commissioners, I am deeply troubled by the recent activities of Sheriff Hamilton while in his uniform of Sierra County Sheriff and thus under the bounds of his oath to office and in representation of the residents of the county. It is inappropriate for him to speak of his religious and political views while in uniform. It is entirely inappropriate and a broken oath for him to observe illegal behavior while in uniform and do nothing, i.e. not enforcing the mandated Public Health Emergency Act. It is most decidedly inappropriate and possibly unconstitutional for him to choose to deputize a group of unvended people solely because they attended a religious ceremony with him. I ask the commission to nullify the actions of the sheriff and teach him that he has certain rights as a civilian, but also has certain duties as an elected law enforcement officer. When he is in uniform, he is that law enforcement officer, and his duties take precedence. I would also like to ask the commission to see to it that the county website be brought up to date. There is a page to post ordinances and resolutions that have been signed. Nothing has been updated since 2018, in spite of the fact that the commission has signed a number of contentious resolutions. In the interest of transparency, please post all proposed resolutions for four meetings and post all signed resolutions in their entirety on the website. Deb Nicole. Brendan Tully. Dear Commissioners, I would like to express my concern regarding the actions of Sheriff Hamilton in deputizing the congregation of New Hope Revival Church. I believe he showed poor judgment in deputizing en masse without proper background checks while in clear violation of the COVID-19 Public Health Emergency Order. Not only was this a careless act, but it displayed a perceived preference for specific religious organizations, something elected officials should always be careful to avoid. Furthermore, his participation in today's rally, Sunday, May 17th, is cause for alarm. This blatantly political rally, perceived by many as an attempt to create civil unrest, endangered public safety and revealed a clear bias. Onlookers received threats while guns were brandished, and one speaker even made the quote, "The only good Democrat is a dead Democrat." By participating in this despicable event, Sheriff Hamilton has revealed that he truly doesn't care for the community as a whole, only those who share his political views. He has incited public disturbance and displayed disregard for legal authority. I feel he is no longer capable of enforcing the laws equitably with regard to the well-being of the entire county. Elected officials serve all of their constituents, not just those who agree with him. There are those in this county who no longer feel safe under his jurisdiction. They will seek to resolve issues outside the law as they no longer have trust in law enforcement. As a law enforcement officer and an elected official, Sheriff Hamilton should be held to a high standard of accountability. As a law enforcement officer and an elected official, Sheriff Hamilton should be held to a high standard of accountability. It is my request that the Commission take whatever actions are in your power to overturn Sheriff Hamilton's careless deputizations and remind him that he is to enforce the law, not stand above it. Thank you for your time. I urge you to do all in your power to restore the county's trust. Brendan Tully. David Hayes. Dear County Commission, I would like to register my concern with the recent actions of Sheriff Glenn Hamilton. By deputizing unvetted members of local church, he has endangered the general peace and well-being of our county. While attending a gathering of church members in an assembly, the size of which he publicly admits the governor has legal jurisdiction to have banned, he sets an example of disregard for the current State Health Department guidelines temporarily in place in response to the COVID-19 pandemic. The sheriff states that he needs additional deputized citizens in case his department should succumb to COVID-19 exposure. To bring, to prevent this exposure and to prepare for such a need, he should not be condoning gatherings of more than five people. He should publicly announce the need for citizens to step forward for deputization. Then citizens from all corners of the county could volunteer and be vetted in advance. Those passing the vetting process would thereby represent all citizens of the county, not just one congregation. In addition, the county can ill afford a threatened lawsuit by the Freedom From Religion Foundation. I request the Commission to instruct the sheriff to de deputize those previously deputized, put out a general call for deputies, vent those stepping forward, and establish law enforcement for the county that is beyond reproach. The sheriff also stated the county is nearing a state of civil unrest. By disregarding the general safety of the citizens of Sierra County, he has promoted, not quailed, any potential for such unrest. If he is concerned about civil disturbances, he should look no further than the closest nearest. Respectfully, DA David Hayes. Nolan Winkler. Bad move. When our governor says no large congregations, it is for a good reason. And our law officers should comply, not fly in the face of it. I'm sorry that there is a suit over it, but Glenn Hamilton brought this on knowingly. Nolan Winkler. Victoria Boynton. The Cowboys for Trump rally, Sunday, May 17th, in Truth or Consequences, is a threat to our community and the public welfare. Inviting people to congregate illegally should be reason to dismiss Sheriff Hamilton immediately. Law enforcement means upholding the law to protect the public. In the face of the coronavirus pandemic, Mr. Hamilton is conspiring to violate safeguards to public health enacted in law. Mr. Hamilton invited Cowboys for Trump into Tier C, defying the state's orders. Their poster is inflammatory, literally featuring a picture of flames. Plus, they misspelled coronavirus on their invitation, indicative of the whole mess. They will be a defiant force who will put citizens of our town in danger. The law, the real law, not their vigilante law, should stop them. It is immoral, cruel, and illegal to spread the virus through refusal to cooperate with the practices that will prevent the contamination of innocent citizens. Right now, it is illegal not to conform to these practices. Finally, it is a horrible abuse of power for Sheriff Glenn Hamilton to deputize church members so that they may defy the law and endanger the entire community. I have grandchildren, I do not want them to be exposed to a potentially deadly disease. Dr. Victoria Boynton. Dennis Dunham. Sue against the sheriff. I must admit that I feel better about our democracy that someone has stood up to legally protest what our sheriff has done. I don't agree that this is a religious issue, but it is a moral one. I watched his performance video before it was taken down and remember chills running up my back. I could not believe that an elected official, even in the days of Trump, would stand up in a church, no less, with his badge and gun to defy the legal authority of the governor of our state and not only encourage members of this congregation, but deputize them to assist in his rebellion. The regulations put in place by the governor were based on scientific reality to protect the lives of the people of the state from sickness and death from a contagious disease. This has become a politicized nightmare situation with people claiming it offends their rights to congregate and spread disease, whether it be in bars or in churches. It disregards the rights to life of those who might likely die if their fellow citizens deliberately ignore that right to life over their right to congregate during a pandemic. This is especially egregious here in Sierra County, which has a high percentage of senior citizens, second to only Miami-Dade County in Florida. And we are the ones most likely to die if we are infected by these self-righteous creeps. Is this how they show respect for their fellow citizens? If so, how would their precious county survive if we all died or just plain left? Because the politics of the local government clearly doesn't care whether we live or die and are willing to back up that disrespect for legitimate authority as well as our welfare with guns and ammo. This is a parody of law enforcement. If the county doesn't condemn this insanity, then you become part of the problem. Do you actually believe that the authors of the Constitution would defend your actions? If so, you are fools, they were not. This is an emergency situation and requires cooperation and caring for your fellow citizens. This is not politics as usual, or we will all die in so many ways. Sincerely, Dennis Dunham. Ariel Doherty. I stand in opposition to numerous illegal actions taken by Sheriff Glenn Hamilton yesterday and in recent weeks. While there has been a great deal of clamor in favor of his actions, and you as Commissioners might personally agree, that does not make them legal or in the best interest of the Sierra County public. My objections are, Glenn Hamilton has violated his oath of office as Sierra County Sheriff. He has, he has failed to uphold the laws of the state of New Mexico, including but not limited to the Governor's Public Health Emergency Order of March 23rd, 2020, by assembling with the New Hope Revival Church service, May 3rd, while the ban to not be in public groups of five or more was still in effect. Two, he has abused his office as sheriff. In uniform, before the assembled ministry, he spoke in defiance of the Governor's Public Health Emergency Order by deputizing some 20 congregants on May 3rd and an untold additional number of May 17th. Also at the church, he has crossed the line of enlisting a specified religious group as supposedly special agents with additional rights under the law. This is a clear and aggressive violation of the separation of churches and state. Mr. Hamilton has misused his taxpayer time and truck on numerous occasions seen at the church and the power of his office to organize and engage in what are clearly unauthorized acts implying governmental authority and has sanctioned such acts. In his position as sheriff, Glenn Hamilton is in violation of New Mexico Section 1016, 3.1C, using public assets for political purposes. He has clearly used his county title, actions, and time to support a political viewpoint. If any federal funds are used in the operation of the county sheriff's office, he is further violating the Hatch Act. If there is any incitement to riot, as Sheriff Hamilton has repeatedly claimed, the incitement is wholly on his part. By amassing a heavily armed crowd in defiance of current state orders, Sheriff Hamilton and his fellow travelers feel that they can use weaponry to intimidate. There are many individuals like myself who are horrified by his abuse of office as a peace officer. We will not stand for such misuse of his powers. Heed the warning from the Freedom of Religion Foundation and other points that are offered here that Mr. Hamilton is operating outside the law. I urge the Sierra County Commission admonish Mr. Hamilton in the strictest manner possible and avoid further legal action.
Time.
Ariel Doherty. Ms. Bartu, do we have any additional public comments?
Yes, sir.
I want to speak for just a minute. Commissioner Swingle, I really want you to send the Commission's high regard and many thanks to those who have worked during this time to keep our services up. Special accolades to Chief Tooley, our Sea Area Emergency Management Officer, our, our flood manager in a senior moment, what's his name?
Travis Adwell.
Travis Adwell. To Ernie and his crew for the sanitizing and keeping entrances and all of our facilities safe while going about their regular duties of maintenance and, and repair. To those who have voluntarily taken furlough and those who have worked from home and those who have kept the phone answered and emails going and our, our, our budget looked at and all of our departments and those elected officials, thanks to each and every one of them. I hope you will convey that to them.
Mr. Chair Commissioners, I absolutely will, thank you.
Sheriff Hamilton is an elected official. He's been elected to two terms, he's in his second term, and he will term out. As an elected official, every single citizen of the county has direct access to the sheriff. I'm not wearing that badge. I'm not going to sit here in judgment of the sheriff's actions. I will depend on our attorney, David Pato, to advise us if the sheriff has crossed the line and put us in either a legal or a fiscal bad spot. I don't walk in his shoes and I don't tell him what to do. I'm a Commissioner, one of three. We take action to provide services, to provide for life and health and security and the pursuit of happiness for the citizens of Sierra County, each and every one. That's why we have public comments. I appreciate those who shared with us a willingness to comment publicly. As my fellow Commissioners, my phone has rung a bunch, I have visited with people in Walmart, in Bullocks, and at Elephant Butte, standing by the side of the road. And there are a lot of concerns out there. Some of those concerns that the Commission is facing today is people are struggling. Many groups, Matthew 25, and the Shepherd's Closet, and, and some volunteers in, in the county have put meals on tables for people who are disadvantaged and unable to get out and go. We have a brand new hospital out here, Sierra Vista Hospital, that the only way you get in is through the ER. And you have to have something that's really life-threatening to even be seen, or the possibility of COVID that needs to be tested. I have talked to so many individuals that are despairing because they have medical needs. Telemedicine doesn't work when you've got heart problems or need of a mammogram or a, a back issue that a pill is not going to fix, you need treatment. I thought that the governor's health orders were for one reason, to flatten the curve. So that we didn't overwhelm our medical facilities with COVID-19. It was a pretty scary deal. It was in February when this began developing. But when she issued her public health order, it was to flatten the curve. We've had one case in Sierra County where an individual working outside of the county tested positive. I know because I have a grandson-in-law who was in that group, that there were 12 individuals who were in the immediate proximity of that individual, and they've all been tested, and none of them have tested positive. This COVID-19 virus is the indivisible enemy, as President Trump calls it. But it's also something that we need to measure. What have been the costs in people dying at home because they were scared to go to a hospital? We have two such cases right here in Sierra County. What are the costs of not getting cancer screenings? And having cancer advanced to the point that that person is at risk of life? What are the costs of depression and despair? Because your business is closed and your life savings are evaporating, evaporating right before your eyes? What are the costs of those who have no symptoms, have no exposure, not being able to visit loved ones? Especially those that are on their way out of this life? I lost a sister two weeks ago. She had fifth stage Alzheimer's. For the last two months of her life, she did not see her husband, her three children, her 10 grandchildren. They called her four hours before she passed and they let her come hold their hand in an isolation unit in the nursing home that she was in. How terrible to die without your loved ones close. How terrible for her husband of 50 years to lose his wife without being able to hold her hand and caress her and tell her to leave her. This is not a situation where we have to decide life or death because we want to go about normal activities in Sierra County. I, I read a lot of fear in these public comments. That's not what we're about. Benjamin Franklin was quoted, "Those who would give up essential liberty to purchase a little temporary safety deserve neither liberty or safety." This is America. It's not Haiti, or China, or Hong Kong. And we have allowed the government to put us realistically in house arrest under the guise of flattening the curve. I would submit to you, the citizens of Sierra County, that the curve has been flattened. Now it's time that we begin to reopen and uphold all the safety considerations. Wash your hands, don't touch your face, social distancing. Be careful, report any conditions, anything that's symptoms. But we got to get back Be careful, report any conditions, anything that's symptoms, but we got to get back to life. And to this one Commissioner, it's high time that we begin. With that, I'll close my comments. Do we have USDA Wildlife Services on?
If he's still there, please.
Yes, sir.
Good morning.
Good morning, County Commissioner. Good morning, County Commissioner and County Manager. Also, part of USDA Wildlife Services, providing lots of resources. I'll make the phone, and I want to make sure my gratitude for Sierra County's support for our Wildlife Services program. Also, I wanted to update some information. We have a new Wildlife Services Director, State Director, he's been on board since October of last year, his name is Albert Cruznow, and we've also increased our staff with a recently hired Staff Biologist, her name is Alisa Ortega. And I wanted to go ahead and visit with the Sierra County Commissioners and County Manager and answer any questions or concerns that you may have or any concerns may have concerning the services that our program provides, or if there's any additional questions you would like to come solve with our Chief Director, he's also online as well. Again, I wanted to say my gratitude on support of our program, and if there's any questions, I'd be more than happy to attend to them today.
Mr. Farhalo, thank you for calling in. These are awkward in historic times. We would much rather have a face-to-face meeting and shake your hand, but thank you to you and Director Gosnell and Biologist Ortega for coming before us today. You know, we have a really good working relationship with Ray Pierce, who is our agent here locally, and he's very active. He comes before us anytime that he has something to discuss or at our request for information. You've really got a top hand in Ray. And I also hear from our folks out in the county, especially those in the far west end, they're in wolf country, that Agent Pierce is very discerning, very technical, very by-the-book in investigating wolf predation issues. And I think that's appreciated because it helps us stand behind anytime that there is a wolf depredation, and when it's probable or questionable, it's not. So I really appreciate that. Commissioner Luna, do you have any questions?
No questions.
Vice Chair Day.
Yes, sir. I have one question. Officer Gosnell and Mr. Ortega and Mr. Farhalo, thank you for being on the phone. A few months ago, we heard a concern about a potential policy change within Wildlife Services not allowing individual staff members, Wildlife Service staff members who own cattle or own ranches to do any wolf investigations. I think we've got clarity on that, that that was not the case, but I also want to confirm with you. Can you explain if that is true or what the actual policy states?
Ah, this is Rob Gosnell. I'll address that. What the policy is, is if they own cattle, they can't investigate their own ranch or their relative ranch, they can investigate anywhere else.
Thank you, Mr. Gosnell. That's the only question I have, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Gentlemen, we look forward, and ladies, we look forward to you coming before us since well over two-thirds of Sierra County is a federal domain. We have excellent working relationships with our Forest Service and BLM administrators with the Bureau of Reclamation, and we look forward to seeing you here under more open conditions and just appreciate the work that you're doing for us in AFIS and Wildlife Services. With that...
And we thank you for that. We look forward to meeting you also.
If you have nothing else to add, then we'll close this item on the agenda, but thank you for calling in, and we look forward to seeing you.
Thank you. Thank you, and we look forward to seeing you, County Commissioners and County Manager. Thank you. You have a good day.
Clerk Trujillo, I want to make sure that the Sheriff gets a copy of these public comments.
Okay.
I'll pass these to you. We're to Board of Finance, Manager Swingle.
Mr. Chair Commissioners, we have nothing for the Board of Finance or old business.
So we're to new business.
Yes, sir.
Manager Swingle.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman Commissioners. What we're asking for is authorization to publish a direct deposit ordinance for Sierra County employees. Due to the COVID-19 pandemic, we want to minimize as much contact in bringing people in to sign checks, process checks, get checks out, so we'd like to go to a direct deposit process. To do that and do it properly, we need to pass a resolution that would authorize us to do it.
Mr. Chairman, ordinance, not a resolution?
Ordinance.
Okay. And this is, we're just looking at just to whether to publicize it or not at this time, correct?
Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move to direct staff to publicize ordinance number 2000 dash 002.
Commissioner Luna seconds.
Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Paxson?
Yes.
Commissioner Day?
Yes.
Commissioner Luna?
Yes.
Motion passes. Please proceed, Mr. Manager. We're to contracts, agreements, and procurement.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman Commissioners. The first item on the agenda is professional services contract. It's an amendment to George Lee's contract. Several years ago, we had reduced George's involvement and his salary, the contract fee that he received. The pandemics really emphasized the need that he needs to be there more often, it can require much more of his work, and this is going to be ongoing, no doubt, with caseloads that we have in the DWI program or misdemeanor compliance program. So George is requesting an additional $1,000 increase in his contract, that's per year. We could cut him from $55,000 to $40,000 over the years and just reduce his involvement. It's time to pick that back up. None of these fines are general fund dollars, these are all DWI grant fund dollars, so it's $1,000 increase in his contract. It also extends the term of his contract through June 30th of 2021. It's staff's recommendation to approve it.
Sorry. Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Luna makes a motion, we approve the professional agreement with George Lee with the changes.
Commissioner Day, second.
Luna is seconded. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Paxson?
Yes.
Commissioner Day?
Yes.
Commissioner Luna?
Yes.
Motion passes. Well, that's a pretty cheap deal to just give him $1,000 bucks and working twice as hard, so tell him, get busy.
Yes, sir.
Although I know he is.
Mr. Chairman, the next item on the B is Amendment 1 between Olive Tree and Sierra County Title Correction and Statutory Inagreements. Basically, we are amending two contracts to agreements, Apple Tree and the RISE contract. The Apple Tree agreement is just changing who the signatory is with Apple Tree, and little verbiage on the providing case management and treatment for both incarcerated and individuals that have been released from custody. It also gives Olive Tree a little more ability to work within the contract and the rentals and housing of clients that once they are released from jail. The current contract does not allow for, it doesn't give them enough latitude to function properly, so it's a minor amendment there.
One correction, Mr. Manager, it's Olive Tree and not Apple Tree.
Olive Tree, yes, sir, I'm sorry. And there's too many of those trees around here.
Correct.
The second one is Amendment 1 to the RISE contract, and that's just changing the name from IDP to RISE.
Okay. Is there a motion?
Commissioner Day moves to approve the amendments between Olive Tree and County Sierra.
Commissioner Luna, seconds.
Moving in seconded, roll call, please.
Commissioner Paxson?
Yes.
Commissioner Day?
Yes.
Commissioner Luna?
Yes.
Motion passes. The Clean and Beautiful Grant Agreement, Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman Commissioners. What you have before you is a grant agreement between Sierra County and State and New Mexico Tourism Department. Main Street went out and solicited a grant. The grant is for $5,162.50. It's for litter receptacles, trash cans, and cigarette receptacles. We're under a very narrow window, we have to have this expensed by June 30th, and it's one of those that it was approved in this last legislative session. It's just taken this kind of timeframe to get all the i's dotted and the t's crossed between Main Street and the Tourism Bureau. So it's staff's recommendation, we accept it, so we hit the ground running in expensing the $5,162.56 for Main Street.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Luna makes a motion to approve the Clean and Beautiful Grant Agreement.
Commissioner Day, seconds.
Moving in seconded, roll call, please.
Commissioner Paxson?
Yes.
Commissioner Day?
Yes.
Commissioner Luna?
Yes.
Motion passes. Resolutions, ordinances, and proclamations. The first one on the preliminary budget, Manager Swingle.
Mr. Chairman, what you have before you is Resolution 108 dash 075. You have a revised copy of it on the table. This is a requirement, we submit this to Santa Fe with the preliminary budget. You're receiving the budget now as we speak. The revision is, we had listed in the resolution that we had public hearings on our budget. We did not. COVID-19 has prevented those public hearings, so we eliminated that one sentence in the resolution. The state has asked local governments to basically use the budget they're using for the current year, use that for the FY 2021 budget, and that's what you have before you with a couple of cuts in spending that have been included in that. But we will schedule a budget meeting with the Commissioners and go over the budget because, frankly, using our current budget for next year, knowing we're going to have revenue shortages, is not a prudent thing to do. So we need to address some savings in our budget, and we'll schedule that workshop for early next month so that we can have the final budget approved and get it to Santa Fe within the time stipulations we have, which is before July 11.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Day moves to approve Resolution 108 dash 075.
Commissioner Luna, seconds.
Motion, and you'll do a roll call, please.
Commissioner Paxson?
Yes.
Commissioner Day?
Yes.
Commissioner Luna?
Yes.
Motion passes. Resolution adopted. Ordinance number 20001, Manager Swingle.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman Commissioners. This is an annual ordinance that the Commission considers restricting open fires and controlled burns in the unincorporated areas of the county based on the fire risks at the time. I will defer to our Emergency Manager and have Mr. Tulley comment about any verbiage in the ordinance that is specifically notable at this point.
Yes, sir. This is basically the same ordinance that we do every year. We get this passed now, it won't go into effect, I believe, for 30 days, correct?
Actually, it's presented as an emergency ordinance, proclamation.
So it can go into effect immediately. I did contact all the chiefs, and just about everybody is already under a current fire ban, especially the Forest Service BLM as well as State Forestry, so we need to push this in. We have procedures put in place as to what can be allowed and what can't. We work with both those communities, work with the fire departments, work with dispatch, work with the Weather Service. So if we do have to do an agricultural burn, we make sure that we cross the Ts and dot the Is.
Chief, we do want to emphasize that any agricultural burns need to be cleared. They just don't do it because they're exempted. Make sure that dispatch is notified and you're notified.
Yes, the proper way that we do now dispatch, if they call into dispatch, they'll have to contact this office first. We have a form that we fill out between the manager and my office. Basically, get their information, we contact the fire chief in that area, check for the days they want to burn, check with the Weather Service, and we basically clear it with everybody. Once it's cleared, then we fax that over to dispatch, and the day of the burn, they can call directly to dispatch. Dispatch will have the paperwork of the approved burn for the agricultural burn.
Okay, thank you. Any comments?
No comments, Mr. Chairman. Commissioner Luna makes a motion to approve the proclamation restricting open and controlled burns in the unincorporated portions of Sierra County.
Commissioner Day, seconds.
Okay, we've got it. Moving in seconded, a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Paxson?
Yes.
Commissioner Day?
Yes.
Commissioner Luna?
Yes.
Okay, we're going to go into the executive session, and the meeting is not closed, we will deal with some issues in the executive session. Is there a motion to go into?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Day moves to go to executive session pursuant to Section 10 dash 15, either age, to discuss matters in regards to pending and current litigation. Personnel and rules, state reasons, as listed on the agenda.
Commissioner Luna, seconds.
Moving in seconded, roll call, please.
Commissioner Paxson?
Yes.
Commissioner Day?
Yes.
Commissioner Luna?
Yes.
So the motion passes, we will return, and the open meeting has not ended, we'll be back shortly. And the open meeting has not ended. We'll be back shortly.
The Sierra County Commission will come out of executive session. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move to come out of executive session and certify that no action was taken and only matters is the summary agenda we're discussing.
Second. Commissioner Luna seconds.
Moved in second. Roll call please.
Commissioner Paxson?
Yes.
Commissioner Day?
Yes.
Commissioner Luna?
Yes. Mr. Chairman, regarding the first two items, we don't need to make a motion, but in regards to the third item, Commissioner Luna moves that we instruct the manager to reach out to the governor to discuss the sheriff and other concerns.
Commissioner Day seconds.
Moved in second. Roll call please.
Commissioner Paxson?
Yes.
Commissioner Day?
Yes.
Commissioner Luna?
Yes.
Do we have any other actions or things to address, Mr. Manager?
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, no, you do not. Next meeting will be regular scheduled meeting is June...
It's not sixteenth. June sixteenth.
June sixteenth.
June sixteenth. Hopefully we'll have an open meeting then. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Day moves to adjourn.
Commissioner Luna seconds.